Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of Commissioners. Our special called meeting, our work session for November 22nd, 2016. Our first tab today is from Community Development Agency. There's one item by Director Johnson and it's to receive, for the Board to receive a presentation on the proposed alcohol district and tailgating area. Mr. Johnson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. And we are here to present to you some details on the open container area for the SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta. There's three things that we're going to cover in this particular presentation. The first is a description of the codes that were approved back in February that authorized this particular agenda item. The second will be similar proposals around Cobb County as well as Metro Atlanta. And thirdly, go into some specifics about the proposal that are being brought forward for SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta. In February of this year, Cobb County passed Code Section 6-133 and 6-134. These were special provisions and exemptions within certain mixed-use developments as well as the tailgating code. The purpose of these two codes were to allow for the open sale and open consumption of alcoholic beverages in predefined areas within mixed-use developments with stadiums. That is the whole purpose of this. And tailgating is obviously to allow for areas where people can park, grill out in a particular area in a managed fashion and maybe have a beer while they're doing so. The tailgating code was put in place for two main reasons. One for this particular area and the other one is for Kennesaw State University with their new football program and the fun that they are having up in that area of Cobb County up in Kennesaw. So this is, this code was passed in February. The provisions of the code state that in order for these two districts to be put into place, that both the mixed-use development district and the Board of Commissioners need to approve the details of the area so that both of them agree to how the open consumption of alcohol would be conducted in these particular, in these particular areas of the county. And there are very specific provisions contained in the code about how alcohol can be served and consumed by adults in these particular areas. So this is not really a new concept. There are a number of downtowns here in Cobb County as well as around Metro Atlanta that have open container, open container areas such as Acworth, Smyrna, and Roswell, among a number of others. Power Springs is currently in conversations about having a similar type of ordinance for their downtown area and for special event areas. This has been done here in Cobb County with Six Flags over Georgia, as well as the Avalon, which is a mixed-use development up in Alpharetta, and as well as Atlantic Station, which has a lot of special events where they allow for the open sale of alcohol and open consumption of alcohol in different areas. So as you can see, this is not a new concept. This is something that has been done and managed appropriately throughout Cobb County and throughout Metropolitan Atlanta. And this is something that we think will be a very big benefit to the visitors and the public as they come to enjoy a great ballgame of the Atlanta Braves at SunTrust Park and the Battery. Getting into the specifics of the proposal being brought forward today, you'll see on this particular map, you'll see the gold area, which is SunTrust Park itself, and then you'll see the blue areas, which are the areas where the open consumption and open sale of alcohol would be allowed. And each of the red dots are areas where a proposal for a vending cart would be, that would then be, the vending cart would be specifically for alcoholic beverages or other beverages. It doesn't have to be alcohol. They could also sell Coca-Cola or other things like that. But again, that's where you would have the vending activity as it relates to, to consumption. One important note is that not every single one of these red dots would be used at every single special event. There are a number of types of events that will have in this particular area. We could foresee concerts and other types of festivals happening here. So they kind of thought about the way that this whole area in mixed-use development would be used in the totality of the sense, and then bring forward a vending concept for all of their particular uses. So for game day, there might only be, I'm not going to say the specific number, maybe only half of them would be used on a particular game day, or for a particular event, only a certain number will be used based upon who's going, where they're traveling to, and where the events are located. So this, to give you a sense that it's, just because you see this number of red dots does not mean every single one of those will be used at every single event that is occurring. To give you a sense between the open container area and the tailgating area, you'll see the area in yellow, which is off of Circle 75, would be the area where the, where tailgating would be authorized. So if you are parked in the tailgating area, you'd then be able to walk to SunTrust Park. There will be pedestrian ways over the road in order to get you safely over Circle 75 so that we can help maintain public safety and pedestrian mobility in this area as we're dealing with a lot of cars and other things converging into, into this area. Here are some specifics on the tailgating area itself. This contains everything from where your trash and recycling will be, where signs will be placed up to let people know about the rules, where grilling areas would be, and so forth and so on. So you can see, they've, they've, they've taken a look at our code, they've, they've met all the conditions of the code, and have laid it out clearly in a plan that, that shows how it will be managed during game days. In the package that was provided to you previously, there's a number of materials in here. Some of the materials that were provided to you contain the maps themselves, this presentation, as well as some specific rules on what different conditions that will be contained in the master covenants for all areas of the Battery. So it's important to note that these will be something that'll be in the covenants. So all people who are agreeing to, to locate and operate in, in the Battery, they'll be subject to the rules that are outlined in, in this package. You'll also see some, some sample vendor training information that's been provided so that, so that training will be an obviously important part of what's being done to make sure alcohol is only being sold and consumed by appropriate people of age. And finally, you'll see the tailgating policies, which I previously mentioned, which will be up online and on the, as well as in the tailgating area itself. Getting into some of the specifics for the policies. For the open container area, again, all policies are contained, will be contained in the master covenants for the Battery. The policies are in full compliance with the Cobb County Code and has been reviewed as such by Public Safety, the County Attorney's Office, and Community Development. The locations, as I mentioned before, show the maximum freestanding vending for the various types of special events that would occur at the Battery. A photo ID will be required for all purchases of alcoholic beverages. Does not matter if you are 80 or, or 21, you'll be asked to see your ID to make sure that alcohol is only being sold by people who are legally able to do so. Something I think is a very smart idea, identifiable cups will be used to facilitate enforcement of this. So if you're walking around with a red solo cup, you're probably going to have someone from the Braves security come up and talk to you. Because there'll be very specified cups that'll be used, so they'll, they'll know that that cup was purchased from one of the vendors at that particular game day, and those cups will change over time. So that the new design will be that for that particular day, so that people don't stock up on the cups and just wait for the next time when they can come in with their own beer for it. So there's, there's, there are things that they're doing to make sure that they can enforce this in, in a manner so that alcohol is only being sold and consumed by people who are able to do so. The security at SunTrust Park and the Battery will be collaborative with Public Safety as it relates to guest conduct. The primary focus will be on, with the SunTrust Park security, and then if they see somebody who's getting disorderly or something is, is not being done appropriately, then they'll call our men and women in blue to come in and help out in remedying the situation so that we make sure we always have that great relationship in order to make this work functionally for all parties. Also, in, in Block D, which is more towards the Cobb Parkway side of Battery, there'll be a command station that'll be there that'll have 24/7 camera monitoring out of all of the area of SunTrust Park. That way, we can make sure that, or the, the Battery will be able to make sure that they have eyes on the streets at all times so that people's security and safety will be of utmost importance and utmost concern as we're going through and, and having these events occurring in this particular area. Getting into some of the tailgating policies. Security for the tailgating area will be handled by security with SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta. Policies and plans, again, are in full compliance with the Cobb County Code, Section 134. Facilities will be provided for restrooms, trash, and recycling. Tailgating guidelines, as I stated, will be posted online as well as on-site. Security for all open container areas, this is both the Battery, SunTrust Park, and the tailgating area, will go through substantial training as it relates to how to spot people who may have, may be intoxicated, or making sure that people are of age who are, who are consuming alcohol. So there'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot of training that'll be occurring through the Battery and SunTrust Park as it relates to the consumption and sale of alcohol. Tailgating in non-approved areas will also be managed by SunTrust Park. So if someone decides to open up a case of beer in one of the parking areas not designated for tailgating, they'll probably have one of the private security members come over and have a little discussion with them and possibly bring in Cobb County Police if that's necessary in that particular case. I want to state again that this has been a collaborative effort. SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta have put together this proposal. It has been thoroughly reviewed by Public Safety, the County Attorney's Office, and Community Development. So we make sure we're looking at all of this, we're making, we're, we're ensuring that the intent of the code is being brought forward and, and actualized with the policies and procedures that have been submitted by the Braves in the Battery Atlanta. If there is not a lot, if, if there seems to be consensus on the Board that this is, is in consensus with our code, then we will bring this forward for consideration on the December 13th meeting, which will be your first meeting in December. And on a side note, staff with Public Safety and Community Development are working diligently with the Braves and the Battery to make sure that we're doing all we can to get the server permits and the license is going to make sure things are happening on, on the first pitch of game day. So we're, we're working collaboratively in, in order to find ways that we can make sure that the hundreds of servers that'll be coming here to work in the restaurants and work on the concession stands, and as, as well as some of the open, open sale areas will have their proper permits, that they've gone through the training that they need, and that all of the license premises have met all the requirements of the code and are, are ready to serve in a diligent and lawful manner as they're trying to operate. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. In addition, Mr. Greg Heller, the Chief Legal Officer, Jeremy Strife, the Vice President and General Manager of the Battery, and Jonathan Smith, who's the Associate General Counsel for the Atlanta Braves and the Battery are here. So if there's any questions that you ask that I will not be able to answer, they will come and save me.
Well, I appreciate that. Good job. I think your staff, everyone, Public Safety, County Attorney's Office, County Manager's Office, your office have done a great job of taking on a responsibility of knowing what needed to be done and, and put a plan in place and worked collaboratively, like you said, to make, make it a safe, enjoyable place for Cobb County residents, the folks that work at the facilities and the visitors, of course, that'll come to Cobb County, and I think there's a good plan. Commissioners, I know we'll want to review the material a little bit more in depth as we go forward. Looking forward to bringing it forward on a December 13th meeting. Are there any questions or comments on the Board at this time? Commissioner Burrow?
Just a couple. If there's, will there be any overlap with vendors for the tailgating and possibly the restaurants or bars or vendors in the Battery? And would they have to go through, do they go through the same process alcohol training like a restaurant would do to get a alcohol permit?
Okay, I heard a couple of questions there, and I'm going to try to answer each one individually. No, it's okay. I'll try to answer each one individually. The tailgating area will not be an area where alcohol is able to be sold. The tailgating area will only be an area where open consumption can occur, so therefore you would have to bring your own beverage, Coca-Cola or, or whatnot, and consume it on-site there. It would, the tailgating code only allows for the, for the open-air consumption of alcohol, not the sale of alcohol. So that's the first question. The second question dealt with training for all people who would be serving in the Battery and SunTrust Park. All people who'll be legally serving will need to obtain a worker permit unless there is an exemption in, in the code as it relates to charitable, charitable, charitable events as, as we have in the code right now for special events. The, but most of this, if it's done by, if it's done by, say, if it's done by Antico Pizza or one of the other restaurants that'll be there, those will be licensed premise with the, with the restaurant, and all of the personal working, people working for that will need to have the work permit that goes along with that. So it'll be managed by the restaurant itself.
So the, the push cart or vendors, they're going to be where the red dots were in the open tailgating space? Would be licensed or permitted from one of the restaurants or both?
Well, my understanding, and I'm going to look for a, a head nod, but my understanding is that it's going to be both the restaurants will be able to work with the Braves as well as the food and beverage vendor for SunTrust Park will also have some space out there. So it'll be a combination of the two, where it'll be their, their SunTrust Park vendor as well as the restaurants that would be able to obtain a, a site location.
Okay, but, okay. I'll, I'll get with you later.
All right, good.
Because I'm not clear. If it's not going to be sold in the tailgate area, but you have a cart there, a vendor there with beer, where is it, how are they not going to sell it?
Now, he just said the tailgate area is for open-air consumption. It's not for having vendors for sale of alcohol at the tailgate area.
The area that was yellow.
Which is separate than the red dot area.
Okay, so these push carts with beer are going to be where?
Direct dock.
Just in the Battery?
In the area of blue.
Okay.
The area of yellow is the tailgating area, and there will be no sale of alcohol allowed in the area where there's yellow on the map.
While she, while she processes that, Commissioner Pupid.
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Joanne Burrow, Sheriff, Commissioner Burrow, consumption is permitted in the tailgating area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but just not safe?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Another question, is the open container area age-restricted?
The open container area is not age-restricted, and that's why the verifications on IDs is of vital importance on all of this, to make sure that alcohol is only being sold to appropriate people. That's where the identifiable cups also comes in handy because the identifiable cup will make sure that a person holding that cup is a person of age, and there'll be a considerable amount of public safety there as well as private security staff that'll be there managing to make sure that people are, the appropriate people are the only ones consuming alcohol.
Okay. In your presentation, you provided different municipalities and locations that provide some type of outdoor consumption of alcohol. The only policy that I'm somewhat familiar with is the one that was put in place at Six Flags Park and in, calling back some of the discussion around that there was some concern because there are a lot of young people at the park, how were they going to ensure that young people weren't consuming alcohol? In addition to having the photo ID system in place, they also had wristbands which were provided to adults, so it was very clear that as you purchased the alcohol, your age was verified, and if you were consuming alcohol, you were given a wristband to be allowed to consume alcohol at the point of sale. It seemed like a very good policy just because even as we deal with alcohol cases here, sometimes we deal with people who look older than their age, and I don't know, I just think it helps to close the loop a little bit, so I just ask if that could be considered.
We will certainly close the loop on that and get with the Braves Council to make sure they're aware of that concern, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Waterford. Thank you. I am familiar with one of the cities there since I was on the Board when we passed that ordinance in Acworth. And having that experience, I can tell you that we've, to my knowledge, zero problems with it. We did utilize the cups, as you mentioned, and we also utilized wristbands, as you were talking about. So that helped a lot for gatherings and things, which is game day and things like that. But during the off days that there wouldn't, I assume, a game, are the restaurants allowed to allow them to carry alcohol out in the area? And if so, which we do allow in Acworth, they have to have the same cups to carry out of the restaurants. And on special events, and we used the wristbands when it was like wakeboard tournaments and things like that. But on normal nights, people could go in the restaurant, or while they're waiting for their table, would have one of these special cups and they could stand outside and do that. Is that part of this, or is that something you consider?
I'll have to circle back with the Battery to see if that's part of their, of the program that they have, but I'll certainly make sure that they're aware of that. That's also a common occurrence if you have been to Savannah. That is something that's, that's very commonly used in Savannah as well as a way for them to manage, manage that same, that same issue.
Just a couple comments. Commissioner, my, my comments and questions are kind of along the same lines tonight. I really think that, I mean, the cup's a great idea, but the problem is with the number of restaurants that are going to be in the Battery, and with the fact that the parking deck is considerable distance, and the fact that you're going to have to be changing them on a regular basis to keep up with the different days, different games, and stuff like that, I really think that the wristband is the way to go because I think from a cost perspective, it's a whole lot easier to have different color wristbands for different days. And all that has to happen is security knows that the color of the day is green or whatever. But I think that in the tailgate area, there has to be some system in place that when a vehicle enters parking, because there's going to be, we know this because we've had that discussion with the parking ordinance, that there's going to be an attendant. All right? And so what happens is when the cars come in or before they're allowed to set up their tailgating, there has to be some system in place that the people that want to drink alcohol show an ID to whoever, get a wristband, they put it on right then and there, because you're going to have to have something in the parking deck that security going around will know exactly who's allowed to drink and who's not, because you're not going to keep a supply of cups at the parking deck. And so if the cups is what you're using, that's just impractical for the tailgate area. And so I think the wristbands, it's easy, you know, every day when they get ready to open the parking lot, they drop off whatever color wristband it is for the day. People come in, they show their, their ID that they're old enough, they get the wristband. Security goes around, they see somebody drinking, they don't have a wristband, they're underage. And since it's controlled access to the parking deck, it's real easy to maintain control over who gets the wristband. I think the cup's fine if you want to do it, but here's what's going to happen. I mean, Antico Pizza may want to have their logo on the cup, you know, steak, you know, Mimo want to have something else, and I just think that, I mean, the cups is great, but you've got all these different vendors coming in and out of the restaurant. You know, once again, it's real easy for the restaurant to have the color of the day wristband, and if you leave in the restaurant and you say, "I want to take my drink with me," you show your ID to the, you know, the maître d' or the person at the front counter, and you get your wristband and you walk out of the, out of the restaurant. But I do think that before we put this in place on December 13th, there has to be a definitive way that it's not labor-intensive to know exactly who's old enough to drink. And, and I think it has to be, it has to carry across from the tailgating area to the open container area. And it should just be the same because you don't want to have one set of rules that are going in the tailgating area, and then the security folks in the Battery have to think of something different. It should be the same in all the same places. And like I said, I think the wristband's the easiest, least expensive, easiest to manage.
Commissioner Waterford?
Yeah, the one thing I failed to ask you, you did mention that this would extend to tailgating at KSU football eventually.
The, the ordinance does allow for it, yes.
All right, well, they've been doing that for two years now, and I'm not sure of any issues or problems, very few. And they're, they don't have a single controlled access point like this would be, but I don't believe that they require wristbands or anything like that. So we look at how their process works, because I know that game versus a Braves game is completely smaller crowd, but it's still a, a large crowd, and there's tailgating everywhere in every parking lot and on the corners. Not that I've ever participated in that or anything, but it might be a chance to look at how they did that.
So Dana, you've gotten several comments and recommendations and suggestions. I'm glad the folks in the Braves and Battery Atlanta here today, so they're able to hear those directly as well. The 13th is literally one, two, one, two, three weeks from today. Y'all got some work to do. So let's, let's get on it and get it out. I would also ask that you get with, if you have, if you need a little bit more clarification in the use of district commissioners, you do that, and that you work to try to get this proposal straightened out for their consideration within enough time so that if it does meet their, address their concerns, we can move forward on the, on the, through the reason today.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Tab two, Cobb County Finance. Mr. Hughes?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. The purpose of this work session, agenda items, is to present information related to the economic development processes and procedures. Consultant work prepared by Pendleton Group. By way of brief background, earlier this year, Cobb County, through the Office of Finance and Economic Development, engaged the services of the Pendleton Consulting Group to assist the county with conducting a comprehensive analysis of our current economic development practices and procedures. Pendleton Group assigned a group of three senior consultants, including the firm's managing partner, to conduct this research and their analysis to complete this assessment. Today, they're represented by two of their three senior consultants, the form of Mr. Steve Smith and Mr. Bill Floyd. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Steve Smith to come up and lead you through this presentation. He'll review their research methodology along with their observations.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, other members of the Commission. We are delighted to be with you this afternoon to share with you our findings. As you just heard, we had the opportunity to present, or actually the opportunity to engage in looking at a comprehensive analysis of the economic development process in Cobb County. My managing partner, Craig Lesser, many of you were interviewed by him. Mr. Lesser could not be with us today. He is out of state, traveling with family. However, I am joined by my colleague, Mr. Bill Floyd, who's a former mayor of Decatur. So as a result, the three of us undertook this project, and really Craig, with his background as the former State Commissioner for Economic Development, added quite the value to this project. And we'd like to walk you through, my purpose today is to walk you through the highlights of what those observations and findings were, and then we will present to you a full report that we prepared for you that you'll have the opportunity to review as well. Our task specifically was to do just that, offer a comprehensive analysis of Cobb County, its, its economic development process and practices. We wanted to look at it, and we were tasked with looking at it from the very beginning, meaning from business recruitment all the way through ribbon cutting in terms of the process in Cobb County. Methodology that we used, primarily this report that you will see was driven by interviews. We conducted more than 50 interviews. Some, some individuals we interviewed twice. So we wound up with just north of 50 interviews. Other methodology included policy review, and Mayor Floyd, with his extensive background, did a very deep dive on the ordinances that currently exist, and the result was a report that I shared with you just a minute ago. You'll have this full report at the end of this presentation. So those were the, the methodologies that we used to go through the report, or to get to the report itself. What you will find, once you have the opportunity to dive into the report, you'll find that there are a number of supportive comments throughout the project. You will find that there also will be some very constructive comments during the process as well. What you see in front of you is the opportunity to see some of those examples. Obviously, this does not include all, but it, it does provide you a random or specific sampling of what it is you will see once you get the opportunity to read the full report. You'll notice that you get everything on the supportive side from "this is a business-friendly county, permitting is easy, utilities are great, I can always get someone on the phone, no red tape." Very positive, supportive comment. And then you get, on the opposite side, you'll get something, at that third bullet on the right, "we get no leads or prospects from the county, not a lot of help. The state and the chamber are quite helpful." So you'll see throughout the process that you'll have a dichotomy of thoughts, you'll have a wide range of thoughts, and you'll have the opportunity to see a very comprehensive situation. Cobb County overall, share with you something that you already know, and to go ahead and provide you the punchline. provide you the punchline, as it were. Your businesses, the schools in Cobb County, quality of life is outstanding. So your overall report, once you get a chance to delve into it, you'll see that the overall report from Cobb, our overall assessment, observations, et cetera, will be very positive. You've got an outstanding number of assets in the county, including the quality of life. As I said earlier, the businesses and the schools are all top-quality. So what you will find is that we will recommend very few adjustments, because the overall assessment is very positive. What I will tell you, drum roll please, is that leadership and relationships matter, because economic development is not necessarily a science, it's more of a combination of art and science, and the leadership piece and relationships do matter. And I think as we've conducted the interviews, as we've had interviews specifically with members throughout this community, that continues to come through, such that prospects very much pay attention to the relationships that elected officials have, they pay attention to the relationships within the county with regard to how individuals get along. And that can sometimes be the, quote, "artful" side of economic development. To the meat of the substance of what we've found in terms of our observations, you'll see that we will have a number of observations that you'll have the opportunity to review. Everything from our recommendation regarding an observation that we noticed, you'll see some of those listed, everything from creating a memorandum, memorandum of understanding. You'll also note that we've suggested, in terms of efforts being directed toward other school system leaders, in terms of your interactions, making sure that everyone is up to date and on the same page, and understanding the importance of economic development, what that means. Further, you'll see observations that we've come away with, understanding that, one I, one we definitely understand, in terms of making the observation, that your quarterly economic council meeting should be resurrected. Those, from what we understand, are very helpful, and we've had the ability to make the observation that those should be resurrected. Also, one of the conclusions that we drew as well, you will see that, as I mentioned earlier, Cobb has a tremendous amount of assets, and it's very positive, the assets that are currently on the books, and that you're moving forward from 2017 forward, you have the ability to really focus on what the positive assets you have in the county, and to be able to build from that base. So you're at a very excellent starting point, or I should say, a point that you have to build upon in terms of a foundation. You know, in conclusion, please know that for all of this to work well, our recommendation and what you will see and what we have found is that the process itself must continue to be very much a seamless process, with all of your partners working really well and really closely together, to be able to retain your current business and to attract the new business that you would want to continue to attract. Those are, Commissioner Weatherford, you were ready for that applause, weren't you?
I was, yes, sir.
We have, we have really enjoyed the opportunity to work with you, as well as staff members and key business leaders within Cobb County, and have really enjoyed the opportunity to do so, and are very delighted to share these findings from the Pendleton Group with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate very much your work. I know it was a lot more hours than you guys anticipated. No surprise you found some of the interviewers, interviewees, to be a little bit more robust than you may have expected, but a good report. I've had the preliminary advantage of being able to see the more detailed report you're gonna issue to the district commissioners in a minute, and I believe it's a great body of work that this county can use to build a platform for moving forward. And Mr. County Manager, I wanted to thank you for your assistance in helping make this happen as well. What I would recommend, Commissioners, is the next step. Since this is a top, you know, thirty-thousand-foot view that has been presented, that when you get the material, that you take a look at what's in there, review it, and give some thought about it, and then I would ask the County Manager to charge Mr. Hughes with getting back with the HU, with the new chair, when he comes in in January, and come back to the Board sometime in the first quarter with a recommendation of where and what and how y'all should move forward with the recommendations or the comments or thoughts that are in the report. Again, a report has a lot of information, but some of it, you may agree with it, some of it you may not, some of it, some of you may agree with and others not, but nevertheless, Mr. Hughes can bring forward, I think, a good recommendation after his interviews with each of you, after you've had an opportunity to review the data and the information and go a little deeper into it, and bring forwards the recommended revisions to our policies and procedures and ordinances and things of that nature to make us a better county in our economic development. So we appreciate your report, we appreciate your work. I think, I think it's a good starting point for the county to move forward in a few months. Any comments or questions from the Board? Thank you so much. Yeah, just a minute. At least, I'm sorry, I looked your way, I didn't see anything moving.
That's all right, no problem. We'll be providing an electronic copy in addition to a paper copy of both the presentation and the full report?
Yes, ma'am, we can make that available to you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you for being with us today. Appreciate that. Mr. County Manager, any comments? I guess not. Okay, we are done for our work session, correct? And we'll pick up with tab three when we begin tonight at seven o'clock. Thank you.